Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the West Covina Planet Commission for Tuesday, August 13. It's about 7:06 here in the City Council chambers. We will begin tonight with a -- we'll be rising for a moment of silent prayer, meditation, which will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Commissioner Holt. So please rise for the -- Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Hing?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hacquez?
Here.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Here. Approval of minutes from our regular meeting of July 23, 2018. Any commissioners have any changes to make to those minutes? Okay. Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Now is the time for oral communications. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. I have no cards for oral communication. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the commission on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we shall move to the agenda. We have nothing on the consent calendar, correct? Okay. All right. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is item number two, which is a code amendment, number 18-04 categorical exemption. The applicant is Mosin Karimi, citywide. The request, proposed code amendment, consists of amendments to Section 26-597, 26-664, and 26-685.103, and adding Section 26685.103.3 to Chapter 26 zoning of the West Covina Municipal Code to allow and regulate off-sale of beer and wine as an accessory use to a service station. The proposed code amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061. Mr. Anderson, the staff report will be presented by who?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that report.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and also members of the public. Prior to the presentation, I just wanted to notify the Planning Commissioner that the Planning Commission that notices for this particular code amendment was published in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune on August 2. And staff also notified 29 interested parties who were signed up for the e-notification service. Just a bit of background regarding the history of the code amendment. A written request was received by staff on June 28, 2018, by Mosin Karimi. He is the owner of the Sherbon Extra Mile Service Station located at 246 North Citrus Avenue. On August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission initiated a code amendment. And on April -- I'm sorry, February 26, 2019, the Planning Commission held its first study session regarding this issue. During the study session, staff presented the Planning Commission with a list of gasoline service stations within the city with business licenses and a list of businesses within the city with active off-sale alcohol licenses. In addition, staff provided the Planning Commission with a list of potential standards discussed by the Planning Commission in 2010, when a similar code amendment was being considered. During this same study session, the Planning Commission directed staff to reach out to the police and fire departments for their input on the issue, bring back information on surrounding city standards regarding alcohol sales and service stations, and prepare a map identifying all service stations and stores with off-sale alcohol licenses within the city. In addition to letters and emails received by staff prior to the meeting, 11 members of the public spoke with concerns regarding public safety and the over-concentration of retailers selling alcohol within the city. Four members of the public, including the applicant, spoke in support of the code amendment, citing customer convenience and the need to stay competitive with gasoline -- with other gasoline service stations in surrounding cities. On April 23, staff presented the Planning Commission memorandums from the police and fire departments. During the discussion, the Planning Commission voted 3-2 to direct staff to draft the code amendment to allow off-site alcohol service at service stations as an accessory use. The draft amendment that's being considered today basically adds a category to the land use matrix, which is in Section 26-597 in the West Covina Municipal Code, and identifies that conditional use permit is required for all -- for the use in the neighborhood commercial, regional commercial, service commercial, medium commercial, and heavy commercial zones, and also in the manufacturing zones. And it's not allowed in other zoning designations. The draft amendment also removes sale of alcoholic beverages as prohibited in service stations in the special regulation section in the West Covina Municipal Code for service stations. It also adds conditional use permit requirements in alcoholic beverage -- in the alcoholic beverage portion of the municipal code, and cross-references the section that identifies the conditional use permit process for service station selling alcohol, and lists the standards that are required. I'm going to go ahead and go over the standards that are required -- that would be required as written in the draft code amendment and as initially recommended in the previous study session by the Planning Commission. Beer and wine sales will only be allowed in convenience stores greater than 2,000 square feet in floor area. A maximum of 10% of the retail floor area will be allowed for the display and sale of alcohol. And I added that merchandise stacking should not be included in the retail floor area calculation. So if there's a shelf with four stacks of alcohol or a refrigerator with four stacks of alcohol, it's only counted as one instead of four times. The sale of beer in quantities fewer than three containers is prohibited, and no alcoholic beverage shall be sold in units -- in unit quantities less than the distributor's intended resale. At the last study session, it was this -- a few of the commissioners discussed limiting it to six containers. But one of the planning commissioners suggested that they were okay with the three tall cans, and none of the planning commissioners disagreed. So this -- this number three is written this way, but if the planning commissioners want to change the quantity -- the container quantity, it would be up to the Planning Commission as well. No beer and wines shall be displayed within five feet of the cash register or front door. The advertisement of beer and wine shall not be permitted at Motor Fuel Islands. An identification card reader is required to determine authenticity of identification that displays the agent of the individual. This is to prevent selling alcohol to minors or somebody that's not over 21. No payphones shall be permitted on exterior of the premises. No beer and wine shall be sold or displayed in an ice tub. No operated video games or entertainment machines. Signs shall be posted in the parking lot notifying people that alcohol shall not be consumed on the premises, and also signs shall be prominently posted saying that California law prohibits the sale of beer and wine to people under age 21. These are the standards that are required at the last Planning Commission meeting, study session. It also discussed regarding limiting hours of operation. There is a section in the conditional use permit section of the municipal code that discusses certain items that could be considered as conditions of approval, and hours of operation are listed as being -- items being used as conditions of approval in this particular section. So that section is already written and in place, and will be considered on a case-by-case basis, the way the code is written. With this, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of the code amendment to the City Council. If the Planning Commission chooses to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, the City Council will hold a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed code amendment. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer. Oh, I'm sorry. And staff did receive an email this afternoon from a concerned citizen, and the email has been provided to the Planning Commission.
And one other follow-up. Just wanted to make sure. I think when we did the staff report, we weren't ultimately clear, but the code amendment also does say that any service stations proposing this must comply with all current development standards. So wouldn't be able to be a substandard station or propose a variance to do this. That would be a criteria for being able to propose a conditional use permit for this type of use.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of staff? I have a -- can you clarify the "our" thing? I mean, would that be something we take on an individual basis on a CUP?
It would be, yes.
Okay. So we're not having a blanket hourly?
No, there is already a code section in the conditional use permit section of the municipal code that discusses hours of operation as suggested conditions of approval. And so if somebody came in for an application for a CUP for alcohol sales in service stations, the condition -- the hours of operation would be -- is one of our standard conditions of approval that we write in every CUP application.
Okay. Thank you.
I think part of the point of that is just so, you know, there may be times when you think it's okay to be open later, and there may be times when you think because of what's around it, it shouldn't be open that late. So that's the purpose of not having a blanket. It gives you a case-by-case analysis, and I believe that there's a restriction on how late you can sell alcohol anyway. Yeah, so.
Okay. I mean, I guess we could talk about this now as part of the standards, but, you know, I would rather have six myself. I don't remember. Did I agree to three that night?
Commissioner Kennedy stated that he was okay with the three tall cans, the pack of three tall cans, and nobody said anything otherwise.
Okay.
What I might suggest is, before we get into any discussion on changes, I think I would hear from the public first, because there may be other things that come up, and you may wish to consider some of the testimony.
All right. We'll go to -- we'll open the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and the applicant is Mr. Karimi. Come on forward, sir, and make your case. And if you could fill out a card, you know, at some point, and give it to staff, so we have it for the record.
Yeah, just -- whatever the city decided, you guys decided to just said the amendment you put in there, and the condition we have to do, we are willing to do that. The hourly usually is just -- is all a standard, but the city could be, you know, it's all up to you guys, the time you want to sell. But the rest of it, stuff, then the packaging, single packaging, single packaging, most of the store, they eliminate that, but factory come with the three-packaging, radio, already packed, and six, or whatever you guys require. Be willing to work for you guys and make the city happy.
Any questions?
I have a question. Well, at what time do you close?
Put your mic on, please.
You're 24 hours open.
Any other questions, Mr. Karimi? I have one question. How many -- how long you been there in that location?
I've been in that location since 1976. Myself, I've been in that location since 1980, January of 1980.
Okay. And at one time, you had a -- you had service base, if I recall?
Yes, I transferred all my service base across the street, which is a forest on Bridgestone, serving community for -- in that location almost 21 years.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming up. Okay, since this is a public hearing, we're going to do those that are -- the applicant, those that are in favor of the proposal, we'll hear from them first. Then we will hear from those opposed, and then the applicant will have a chance to rebut those comments that were made in opposition, and only those comments. Correct?
You're correct. I'm sorry. When you're finished.
Okay. I'm done with that part. Did you?
I think Mr. Karimi would like to present something else to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Sure.
So desire.
Can you come to the microphone and kind of describe what you're presenting to us?
These are some of the signatures of my customers that are willing me having the beer and wine license in my location.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I'm going to call forward Michael Tuohy.
Michael Tuohy, and I'm not as comfortable speaking on this side. Fred's much better than me speaking on this side of the mic. I still get nervous, but I'm -- Michael Tuohy, the owner of Rockview Dairy. We're a 43-year business owner in the city of West Covina, a 41-year-old landowner in the city of West Covina. And just to talk about beer and wine and the difference, at one time grocery stores were not allowed to sell alcohol at all, and that's why you've seen in the old days a liquor store next door to the grocery stores. Times change, and a matter of convenience, grocery stores added that. Dairies came along. Our dairy was started construction in 1969 and 1970, when it was approved, and in '75, when we got our alcohol license, and it was gotten by Mrs. Klotz in 1975. Dairies had special conditions put on, so the liquor store industry would be protected. And they made it that I have to ask people to step out of the car when they purchase alcohol, and you'll see those signs at my business, and that's something we have to do. But it's a matter of competition and fairness, even though this may hurt me, it's not fair for me to sit up here and say, "I'd love to be the only alcohol store in all of West Covina." But just recently, you guys approved Sprouts, and we shouldn't pick winners and losers based upon size of corporations or companies. It should be fair to everybody, and I just want to make sure that I believe people can be good neighbors. It's really based on the operator. Like I said, I've had an alcohol license directly across the street from a beer and wine license, directly across the street from a elementary school. It's a junior high school now and a church, and we haven't had issues. Everything's different. I wasn't the one present when the alcohol license was issued. I wasn't the owner, but I'm saying times are different, things do happen, and it always will fall on the operators and the quality of operators. But dairies exist because of convenience. It's a matter of where you want to shop, and some of you may want to go to a grocery store to run in and get a three-pack of 24-ounce Budweisers. Some of you may want to go to a more convenient spot, because that's all you need. And I believe it should be left to the business -- I mean, to the customers, not to City Hall on who's successful and who's not. I'm willing to have the competition, and I welcome the competition within our community. I just don't want them at every location, and I understand that. And I believe there's some other fair things to look at, and, I mean, a lot of it's addressed. A lot of gas stations these days don't have bathrooms. And I believe a lot of the larger convenience stores at gas stations operate actual full-service bathrooms, which is kind of nice when you have to go. I know it has nothing to do with the alcohol thing, but it's just a matter of fairness. I do believe it's fair to do. I understand there's always concerns. A lot of the concerns that have been brought up in the past here about what's been happening hasn't been the cause from gas stations, because they haven't had the licenses. And I still think that Sprouts, which has just got approved, we shouldn't say, "We'll give one to Trader Joe's," but not to a man who's owned a business in our city for 40 years. But Trader Joe's is okay, because some people like Trader Joe's. I would tell you Trader Joe's should get one also, you know, and let the opportunity stand for everybody. But that's my concern. Like I said, I have been a longtime operator here. We did work with Mosin when the business was moved, when he moved the thing across the street, his service base. We also worked with Trojan Tire and moved them across the street also when we did the Grove Shopping Center. But there's been things then and there by the city, but that's just my thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. Couple things. We need to run the clock next time. And could we close the doors, officer? If you would please. And Mr. Shoemaker? Oh, John Shoemaker, please. Thank you.
One of the things I was looking forward to was Phil Kaufman being here, because he and I actually agreed on this subject. So it's going to be interesting to hear him agree with me. Unfortunately, he's no longer here. One of the things he said, and I'll steal it from him, was, you know, this whole thing is kind of a distinction without a difference, you know, that, you know, because they have gas pumps, somehow it makes it different than a regular, you know, than another store or those types of things. I personally think it should be, you know, if they're qualified to have a liquor license, or I should say beer and alcohol license, they should be able to have one. We don't put different require -- you know, they should have no more requirements on them than any other store, you know, that has currently. I think that's just fundamentally fair. Again, you know, there's such a minor difference whether, you know, you look at a couple of places. I'm thinking of the AM/PM minimart over on, what is it, Sunset and Merced. While I'm pumping gas, I can walk next door and buy something from the 7-Eleven and come back. Okay. You know, that sort of thing. I understand people have concerns. Well, what's the concern? We didn't have people out protesting with Sprouts getting one. You know, we've had restaurants come into town lately that are going to have them or have them, and I don't see people here demanding they not be there, because there's too many. You know, success is going to be based on, as Mr. Tuohy said, the public going there and those types of things. I look at it, too, as the businesses that do it, they're going to be more concerned about keeping customers and keeping things going the way it should be. You know, if they don't have homeless standing in front of their buildings today, it's not going to be because all of a sudden we're selling beer and wine. They're just going to back it up, because they don't want people to drive away customers. They actually will have, you know, two things. If I'm going to buy some gasoline and buy some beer or wine at that place, and I drive up, and I don't like the people who are standing in front of it bothering me, guess what? I'm not going to buy either one. I'm going to go somewhere else. So I think it is more -- they have more to lose, so they're going to be more inclined to make sure things are kept the way it's supposed to be. They'll probably be a lot tighter on things, because they want to have that, to have an environment. And I'm just waiting for the argument of, "What's the difference? What's the difference because I happen to sell?" You know, I happen to sell, you know, beer and gasoline. What is the difference? You know, I know you've talked about different requirements. My attitude is, what's the requirement if it's a grocery store? What's the requirement if it's, you know, some other traditional store and things like that in order to sell it? Those are, you know, they should meet the same requirements. They shouldn't have anything special, because one of the products they happen to sell is gasoline. And why gasoline? You know, what if there's charging stations there? We're getting more and more along those lines. We're getting more natural gas cars, propane, you know, hydrogen, et cetera, et cetera. So if that starts to spread, well, we don't sell gasoline. We sell, you know, 10 minutes at a charging station, or we sell propane, or we sell something else. Does that mean, oh, then they're exempt? That's the silliness of it, because of the other product. You know, yes, they don't match, but you know what? I have to drive to a store. I have to drive to a liquor store to get it anyway. So what's the difference if I'm driving? I make one stop instead of two. So that's where I'm at. I hope you approve it. I even think with less restrictions than what you currently are looking at, because I don't see the difference. We'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Those are the only cards I have in favor. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the proposal? No? Then we will move on to those in opposition. Call up Mr. Forrest Wilkins.
Forrest Wilkins, my wife and I have lived in West Covina in October this year for 47 years. We've raised our family here. They've gone to local schools, longtime resident. Most of you on the commission know I'm a retired Los Angeles policeman. Of my 30 years of service, I spent 19 years in the South End of Town of Los Angeles, where there's a high propensity of alcohol dispersing locations. I come from the point of view that if you have alcohol sold in gas stations, it creates a nice, convenient avenue for gangbangers and alcoholics. They can run in there, get their alcohol, and you can't convince me that that bottle cap or that can of beer won't be opened before they hit the driveway. That's from personal experience dealing with that element of our population. This issue has been going on for more than 10 years. Mr. Redholtz has flip-flopped both ways. He's been for it. He's been against it. He's been for it. He's been against it. That's not true. About 10 years ago, I presented 767 residents' signatures they do not want alcohol in gas stations sales. My latest count was, I think there's over 160 alcohol dispersment retail places in the city limits of West Covina. There have been two owners that come back about every other year. The gas station owner here, it had already presented itself, and then it flips flops from him to the one at Sunset and Merced. They presented signatures of his customers. We had, I say "we" because there are several people gathered these signatures, 767 residents say they don't want it. And the history of this is that it used to be back in the '40s and even the '50s, you couldn't sell alcoholic gas stations. And then along about 1985, the state legislature changed the Business and Professional Code allowing gas stations to sell alcoholic beverages. However, if there was a local municipal code, it would not override that. If the municipal code is changed, that law is gone forever. The one nice thing about living in West Covina, we have certain things that we stick out between other cities that don't have it. Just because other cities have it, we have to have it? No. It just adds to the fact, you know, that we are a community of homes and families. I heard a statistic the other day that West Covina, I think, is the third city in the state of California that has longtime residents, something like eight years before they move, which -- which just signifies, you know, we're somewhat a stable community. Robert Torres called me just before I arrived here tonight. He had a family matter. He says he's going to try to be here, but you've all heard Robert Torres before, he's on my side of the fence, you might say. And the bottom line is, this is our community. In the past, we've had seven hundred and sixty-seven residents sign a petition saying they don't want it. One time, Herb Redholtz says, well, the citizens want that, so we need to listen to the citizens and follow their lead. As I said, I've lived here for forty-seven years. My wife and I have raised our family here. We like the community. We have no plans of leaving. My sister says, you're never going to move. I think she's right. It's a great city, we like living here. So I urge you to consider how unique West Covina is. You know, it used to be that West Covina had on their city limit signs, "Headquarters City of the East San Gabriel Valley." I don't know what happened to those signs, but that made us different. This can make us different. We don't have alcohol beverages sold at gas stations. And isn't it amazing? You look at it, there's what? Two gas station operators are really going to do it? I encourage you, do not vote for this, throwing away this law that we have for West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, city staff members in the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, forty-one-year resident of West Covina, also retired police officer, retired deputy sheriff, like my man here from LAPD, also the former mayor of the city, like Mr. Tuohy, but this time we're not agreeing. You know, in nineteen twenty-three, the city had a beautiful beginning, based on the idea of being a place that was built for the residents, a place of beautiful homes, clean and safe streets, a city where you could buy a home, raise a family, enjoy your property, and feel safe and secure in your home and your community. Today, our city is headed in the wrong direction, and everything seems to be about money. Too many residents do not pay attention, as you can see tonight, too few people here. And this situation has allowed the city to develop a long history of a leadership that has betrayed and underserved the residents. We know now that putting a huge municipal and toxic waste dump near the city, near the center of our city, atop a pristine, open, green space, and a creek bed was a huge mistake. The mail odors made us sick to our stomachs, and the long line of smelly trash trucks made bad traffic even worse. Parts of our city have to deal with mailboxes in front of our homes that are an eyesore, it takes up space, and/or we have a community clustered mailboxes where they both are facilitators for mail and ID theft. Since nineteen ninety-two, there has been a violation of the law that requires an open bidding for our trash hauling service.
Mr. Sykes, excuse me, what has this got to do with the item? All the trash talk and mailboxes, what has that got to do with the item?
With what you're doing right now, if you'd just let me continue.
I'd like to just kind of stick with that.
It's about what we're doing right now, underserving the residents, disregarding the residents. That's what this is about.
Okay, go ahead.
It's been done before, and now repeating the process of making mistakes. I'm just trying to remind you, because you know the history, but I want to remind you, if you'll let me.
Go ahead, finish.
Thank you, sir. And, and what that means about the trash thing is just, we pay more and get less. In the early two thousands, city council gave us, gave certain employees three fifty retirement, and they did not put in a plan to contribute to that retirement. This was hurting us today tremendously. We're bankrupt. You know, you say, what does that have to do? That's part of the situation, our thinking. Need to think about the residents and how we're suffering because we aren't making good decisions. And this created a huge debt that the city is currently struggling to pay for today. In two thousand and six, Big League Dreams, another thought, fifty-seven million dollars of debt, and the plan, that plan did not call for how the debt was going to be paid, fifty-seven million. Same thing with the residents in Shadow Oak and South Hills, South San Jose Hills community. We go off working, trying to pay for what we buy, our homes and so forth. We don't pay attention because we're busy. And those places where schools and parks were promised to be built were taken from their taxpayers and sold for private gain. Telecommunication towers, same thing. They come to town, and we forget about the laws and the rules that we have. Telecommunication towers should have been, the cabinets should be subterranean. We can go to Shadow Oak Park and see three of them, looking in your face, how'd that happen? Same thing has happened tonight. Residents put on the back, our health is forgotten about, and businesses are put forward. We need to break that cycle. And now we also have leaders that are working on the cell towers where the one-hundred-feet rule will be ignored and, and removed. Again, forgetting about the residents and putting businesses forward. And tonight, we have more to lose with this situation from our community that we've grown accustomed to. When we moved here, we saw what we, what we purchased, and we were comfortable with that. And now you're changing those things. This alcohol in gas stations law, it would diminish our ability to control the amount of locations where gas, where gas and alcohol would be sold, and this will happen forever. And this will create many more locations where alcohol can be sold. We see how the restaurants, we, we, we understand that, most people want to come in and sit and eat. We let that happen. And then, of course, the, this law helps distinguish our city.
Mr. Sykes, it's five minutes and thirteen seconds.
Okay, give me a few more seconds. As I was saying, this, this lowering of the standard of our living, this is facilitating the introduction of strip joints, nude bars, sale of personal marijuana stores, drug paraphernalia, and other unhealthy and undesirable businesses.
Okay, Mr. Sykes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, can we cut it off? I mean, you're really drifting off into a, into another world here. You're making a giant leap.
I'm sorry, a giant leap?
Yeah, I mean, would you just wrap it up if you would please?
A law that takes from our ability to protect our property and, and to protect our community is a giant leap? Is that what you think? That's our problem, is that you don't think that this protects our community. That's the problem.
Fred?
And in, and in closing, let me close on this note, okay?
Please, please close.
Because you keep interrupting me, and you keep, you know, interrupting my famous thought, so let me finish on this note. If you think it's such a damn good idea, then why don't you please do like you're doing the tax? Put it to a vote of the people. Let the people decide, because this one is given to a Supreme Court, and now we're going to lose it forever because of your decision. It doesn't have to happen. Put it to the people, let them decide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other cards in opposition. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Mr. DeRue, five minutes. Is that timer not going off, Jeff?
Turn that timer off. It will work now on Jefferson. I don't know if I'm on opposition or in favor, so I'm going to take that neutral ground. Honestly, I feel for you folks. I've been hearing the back and forth arguments. Tuohy makes a good argument about fairness. I don't always buy into that argument. As a free marketer, one that loves money, I have nothing against money. I realize that government does play a part, though, in holding back some areas in that free market that impact the quality of life for the residents that live in the city. It comes to mind Fair, Fair Grove and Valinda, gas station. Not sure if that's West Covina, but it sure is close. It has a whole lot of bad folks hanging around that area. Seven-Eleven on Workman and Assusa. We now have a buildup of homeless, alcoholic, drug addicts, and it's no coincidence that that's their, their spot. That's where they're drifting to, to that Seven-Eleven. It's no coincidence that they're drifting over to that gas station on Fair Grove and Valinda. I believe you cannot lose sight of that reality, to do so just for the sake of money, because I think there's some truth behind this crave for, for money, not just from business owners, because that's a good thing, but coming from the city to the point where it's now blinding our leaders from doing the right thing. So I don't think I'm going to add anything to this argument. And like I said, in some ways, I'm in favor of free market, making money, but I cannot lose sight of the fact that when I drive to the store or to the gas station, I'm now confronted with individuals that are attracted, migrate there because of alcohol, tobacco, and the city is failing at stopping it from happening, which is my major concern with West Covina's governments, that they're not stepping up to the plate and taking care of those problems. You guarantee, protect us from, from those threats, those inconveniences, and maybe you'll have me on the side of selling beers at gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I have no more other cards. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Mr. Creamy, you have the opportunity to rebut, if you wish, what was said in opposition.
The only thing I can say in the gas station is no more gas station anymore, it's a market. They call it extra mile, super, I mean market, you know, it's a convenience store for everybody. Everybody needs anything, they walk to gas station. We give the community the service. Whoever needs a restroom, they do all twenty-four hours. Whoever needs anything to be, get the convenience, they are there, and we are there to help them out. I never had any complaint to my gas station. I've serviced the community for forty years, and I have a cleaning gas station in the area. I don't know, you guys saw it, you should have stood by and look at it. And I have at least four, five people on duty all the time and take care of my customers. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Does staff wish to have any comments or anything?
No, I don't think we have any comments. I think we're just ready to hear deliberation by the planning commission.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and start this off. Forty, forty-plus years ago, service stations, gas stations had two thousand square foot buildings, like some of them do now. Back then, in those buildings were fan belts, cans of oil, parts for cars, tires, hoists to lift the cars up, and auto mechanics to service cars. Over time, those buildings were repurposed, torn down, remodeled, or even in some cases the same buildings used, and they became convenience stores. I have been pretty clear from the outset here that this, to me, is a pro-West Covina business idea. These gentlemen, this one in particular, and some others that are small businesses operating in the city of West Covina, came to us and they're looking for a little help to be competitive with other cities. You can see, now, by the way, these, it may say Chevron, or it may say Shell, or, you know, Seventy-Six, those are the big corporations. The people that are owning these businesses are small, independent operators that are trying to make a living. It was mentioned that, and I agree, that, you know, West Covina is, is a city of families, full of good people. You know, I would, I would argue also that Covina, Laverne, Glendora, and Walnut, they're also cities that have families, that have good people in them. The, the argument is made that if this were to go through, that there would be, that our wives and our girlfriends would be afraid to go to the gas station and pump gas and go into the store because they're going to be, as was used, drunks and gangbangers. That would make it difficult for them to do that. The list of cities that's in our staff report has been available to the public for weeks and months, listing those cities that allow this. It would be very easy to substantiate those claims by going to those cities and requesting a public document, which would be the crime log. You can get it from the police department. That type of evidence would be very powerful to come in with the Covina police log, or the Glendora police log, or the LA County Sheriff for, for Walnut, and read off dates and times and locations where incidents occurred, where calls for service occurred, where the police had to be called to handle something. In all, this is, we've had two study sessions and now the public hearing. None of that's been produced. West Covina, we all know, we all love West Covina, it's a good city. Over the years, times have changed. These business owners that operate these businesses are not going to let their whole livelihood and business go down the sore. They're just not going to let that happen. Mr. Tuohy made a good point, as did Mr. Shoemaker, that we are allowing, if not for the gas pumps at the dairy, I mean, I just don't, I just don't see the difference. I just don't see the difference. I'm going to let my other commissioners weigh in on this at this point. Who would like to go? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm not going to say a whole lot more than what you've already offered as an argument in favor of the, of the ordinance. I do want to reemphasize that you did bring up a good point about what has been the record of how this type of business establishment has had in other neighboring communities that allow this sale of beer and wine at, at gas stations. If it was, and I do believe, without having seen those numbers, because they haven't been, as you say, haven't been shown to us, that it's not the, the great apocalypse been, as you say, haven't been shown to us, that it's not the the great apocalyptic downfall of those communities to have the sale of beer and wine at gas stations. It's certainly not a big newsmaker, but if the, if it is, the, having that sort of negative impact on those communities, you know, please show us, please demonstrate to us, show us with with facts and numbers. They're out there. And we've, we've helped you identify where the, where these locations are, these cities like Covina and Glendora. One that wasn't on this list, by the way, is another is Diamond Bar.
About Pomona?
I don't know about Pomona, but I do know about Diamond Bar. But I certainly don't think Diamond Bar, or Walnut, or Glendora are any less fine, less finer communities than West Covina. So I don't know that an argument in opposition, or the arguments that we've heard, really hold much water.
Okay, let me, let me just, one other point. I, I contacted electeds in other cities that that have this, and, because I wanted to find out if if the types of issues that have been brought up in opposition, is this something that is actually a reality in those cities? And I was told at each location that it's simply not an issue. It's not happening. Very simple to check. You can call these electeds in these cities, in Covina, and I, I work in Brea, they allow it over there. It's not an issue. It's not a problem. The other thing to remember that, an argument was made in the past, that if this goes through virtually overnight, there'll be 18 new liquor stores in West Covina. It's important to remember, as was brought up in, noted and verified in the staff report, that if applications come in to do this, it requires a CUP, a conditional use permit, which requires a public hearing in front of this commission every single time, just like the hours would be taken on a case-by-case basis. Each and every application is on a case-by-case basis. So it's, it's, it's not a slam dunk. It's not a slam dunk that everybody, every gas station or service station is going to, is going to apply. That's one reason why we have these restrictions. These are, these are standards that if this goes through, they're going to go to the city council. City council's going to have, you know, this is, requires, this isn't even something we do that's appealable. There's no appeal here. This automatically goes to the city council at a public, at a public hearing in front of the city council, and they'll make the final decision. And what we are sending them, if we do, are recommendations, not written in stone, they're recommendations. They could take those recommendations, add to it, make them fewer. It's up to them at that point. the point, well, Commissioner Hockes is re, was reiterating my point. I hate to reiterate my own point again, so I'll let somebody else speak. Commissioner Kennedy?
I still feel the same, you know, Forrest. About 10 years ago, I was at Del Norte Park, Little League, and you asked me to sign your petition then, and I said no. And 10 years later, 11 years later, I feel the same way. You have a lot of good points, you know, 700 people who sign a anything, that's, that's, that's impressive. That's really impressive. Jefferson, you, you talk about homeless and all the issues behind workmen and, and Azusa, behind the 7-Eleven. That's been a massive problem for a long time. We've cleaned that out a couple of times a week, and they keep coming back. And I'll even go a step farther. After, after our barbecue at Hearst Ranch on, on Sunday, I got attacked by a homeless guy. I had to fight for my life, and, and it was not good. And, and you know what happened as soon as I went home? I got all my windows knocked out in my Cadillac. That's called retaliation. So it is an issue, but I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move forward, Mr. Chair.
It is.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to have a back and forth.
I would not disagree with you.
We're not going to have a back and forth.
I would not disagree with you.
Who wishes to go now? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I've been with this thing since the beginning, and, and nobody has ever been able to explain to me why we need this. I mean, I don't think anybody's ever had a problem buying alcohol with what we have today. So where, where is the need to have more? I, I just don't understand that. We had that petition several, whatever it was, what year, with 767 names. I thought that was pretty powerful. And we're supposed to do and represent the people, and I thought they spoke loud and clear. But again, I'm being redundant. What's the need for this? We've got 55 locations now with off-sale licenses. Has anybody ever come to anybody and said, gee, I just have a trouble, I'm having trouble finding a place to buy alcohol? And when it comes right down to it, the only person that benefits from this is the gas station owner, not the customers. It's the gas station owner. They're the only ones that benefit if we change this and make it available. I can't see who, who else is going to benefit from this. So I just cannot go along with this petition. I just can't. Show me where it's, it's a benefit to the city and to the constituents, and I'll change my mind, but it's not. I don't think anybody, there might be some people who'll say, oh gee, it was convenient to go in there, but, but onesie-twosie stuff, they're so used to going to places now to buy it, what's the difference? And another thing that sticks in my mind, the gas stations wanted a business to sell gas. And I know it's, it's evolved into where they get snacks and stuff like that, but I think there's got to be some kind of limit as to how many things can they sell. I don't think Macy's, if Macy's comes to us and said, gee, we want to sell alcohol, you know, type of thing, it's totally different. And I think the only person here that that benefits from this is the gas station owner. That's the only one. And the people that do not benefit from this are the people that want into business in this city to sell alcohol liquor stores. That's their main source of business, and you're taking away from those people i- in the liquor stores. So again, I just, I just keep thinking of this thing as, who benefits from this? Who benefits from this? And it's the gas station owner. And because of that, I'm against this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hing?
Well, I guess tonight, we're really talking about land use, zoning. Certain section of the city, for example, it's carved out for residential only. Certain sections, it's carved out for mall activity. Certain sections is carved out for, such as gas stations. So it is the zoning issues that we're talking about tonight. And on top of that, it's like, how are we dealing and how are we changing our zoning, and how will that affect our neighbors and the community as a whole? So in terms of changing the zoning, we're talking about a gas station that he bought this business years ago, knowing that it's not zoned for this use. So each parcel of our land in West Covina, there is a certain use that we can do. Otherwise, you know, everywhere, every lot, we can change it to a strip dancing club, or something that the community may not like, marijuana district, but that's not some of the community that had been set up from years for my, you know, commissioners and my old ex-mayors and councilmen in the past. So there, there's a reason why they set it up years ago, why we have a certain zoning, and why is it good for our community to, today, that we, we loved, to lived in, and we feel safe to live in. And I can speak for one, as a woman sitting up here among all men, and I grew up in a family among all men, I'm pretty comfortable being around all men. But at the same time, when I go to a gas station, you know, past a certain hours, and have people holding a can of something that's in a brown bag, I'm a little bit nervous. So not to say that I can't protect myself, but I am nervous to be around that environment. And, and I have encountered those environment, not that I want to go out in the middle of the night or what have you, but it's a gas station. When you drive, you run out of gas, you need to go to a gas station. And from hearing from our ex-police officers and the community, repeatedly, they keep telling us that they don't want this land use to change, basically. So it's not taking businesses away or adding business to it. It has to do with our land use. I mean, when we change one thing, how is it affecting the other? I really don't know that, especially with the shortage of our police officer nowadays. We're in a budget crisis. And incident like this, are we adding more police to take care of this? I mean, do we have a budget to add more policemen to take care of our community? I would love to see that. If, if we creating an environment or a community that may be negative impact, I mean, this to me did not seem positively impacting the whole community as a whole. That's why we don't live in a certain sections of our, of cities in LA County. I'm sure all of us has a reason why we live in West Covina. It's been protected from the past, and we're here also is trying to have a big discussions about how we can protect it also in the future. I'm very uncomfortable, especially some of the rules in the regulation affecting our zoning code that was set up by our past mayors and councils, that has been protecting. It's grandfathered in, and once we approve this, we cannot undo it, because the law was set up for a certain reason, is to protect us. And how are we going to deal with, and the homeless population apparently is not, you can say it's not decreasing. I've lived here 20, 30 years. Honestly, I can say I've never seen homeless in a certain section of town, but now it's everywhere. It's everywhere. And the homeless are not because, I don't know what, how to say this, I mean, alcohol might be an issue, drug might be an issue, that's why, maybe that's why, mental issue might be an issue. A couple with all that together, it can't be good for the community. And I don't know how to resolve these issues. You can't call the police to solve the homeless. I tried, because I got one sleeping in front of my house. Didn't exactly know what to do, so I left instead. So in a situation like this, I mean, okay, it's a little bit off track, but we're coming back to zoning. In our city, we always have different zone for different section. That's why it's so important, when you buy into the community, you look into the zoning, you, why there's certain reason why you don't want to live next to commercial activities, or you want to live close, some may not want to live in a residential area. But that's, that's zoning laws that protects everyone so that we know what and where and and what circumstance we might get ourselves into. I'm very uncomfortable, especially with this gas station issues, is that it impact highly in one section of town. So I like to see that before we make decisions and how it impact the future, it's really important, because once we change the rules, we may not be able to get it back, especially the grandfather clause that, that this has been protecting us for the last 20, 30 years since, since California opened up its market. And regarding the business owner, he knew that he bought this as a gas station, because it's zoned for only gas stations. And it's not, yes, he wants to change our zoning code, but it's also up to us to take into consideration that one is a business, and also as a whole, as a community, how is that going to affect our community as well? And we are all part of the community. So I'd like everyone to really just, you know, take a second to see how we're going to affect our futures with tonight's voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, have anything to add?
No, I mean, you did have some discussion early on about conditions, so I think the question is, maybe it's, you know, some of these times it's a little hard to tell what the commission wants to do, but maybe the first step is, does the commission want to recommend this approval to the city council? And if they want to do that, then you may want to have, you may not want to vote on that till you discuss the conditions that are, or the, what, what we've drafted in the code.
Well, I would like to, just from my perspective, I would like to have a, a, I would like to change the quantities from three containers to six. I don't know if anyone agrees with me on that or not, but if you don't, you don't. I mean, I'm, you know. You guys are good with three?
I'm good with three.
Okay, all right, okay. Any other discussion on the conditions? Commissioner Holtz?
I'd like to make a motion to deny it. I don't know that we need to go any further if, if it's denied.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second deny. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Holtz? Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Hockes?
No.
Chairman Reddles?
No. Motion to deny fails three to two.
No, it's, it's, it's up to the city council.
Well, you have to make, we have to make a motion to approve or to send it on, so.
Then I will make the motion.
Mic on, please.
Okay.
Then I will make the motion to recommend this resolution be sent to city council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that's the proper way to...
Did we do that right?
Well, you're close. Basically, you're recommending, you're, you're, I think I should look at the, the agenda, but you're, you are adopting a resolution to recommend approval to city council of this code amendment. You don't have to reword that?
Our resolution, well, recommend approval of, of the resolution, then.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hockes, seconded by Commissioner Kennedy. May we have a roll call vote on this motion, please?
Perhaps before you vote, you might want to just make sure you have a discussion, make sure everyone is comfortable with the conditions. Maybe, maybe that's not an issue, but I just want to make sure that that is not an issue before you, because once you vote, you can't, you voted on the resolution.
No, I mean, if, there's obviously no consensus to
I'm good with.
To change that, so I brought it up and I got shot down.
I have no interest in changing the conditions.
Okay, I mean, I brought it up, I got shot down, I can, you know, I can live with it. Okay.
I'll turn my mic on, too. So the thing that we, I need to give you a resolution number, which would be 19-dash-5997. And then if you are ready, then I'll, we can do a roll call on that motion.
I believe we are ready. Roll call on the motion. Yeah, roll call on the motion, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
This is a motion to forward to the city council.
It's a recommendation, recommendation of approval of the code amendment forwarded to city council, yes.
No.
Commissioner Hing?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockes?
Yes.
And Chairman Reddles?
Aye. So the motion passes three to two, and now it'll go to the city council at a future public hearing date for them, correct?
Correct. It will be noticed, just like this one was, if you're interested and you haven't signed up for e-notification, please sign up for e-notification. It goes out, as Joanne mentioned in the staff report, it does go out on e-notification. We don't have a scheduled date yet, but it will be scheduled and presented to the city council for the discussion.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, too. The way, the way to stay in the loop on these things is to sign up for e-notification. That's the way you're going to get notification on any and all things pertaining to city hall business. Okay? Thank you very much. And by the way, I want, I do want to just say one thing. I want to thank staff, because this, there was a lot of work involved in this, a lot of research, a lot of... of research, a lot of, you know, looking things up and it takes a lot to put this together and I know we appreciate it. So thank you very, very much.
And please send that appreciation towards Joanne, not towards myself.
I was looking at Joanne, right over your head, Jeff, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Jeff, that's the resolution nineteen dash five five nine seven. That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to item number three, which is another public hearing, precise plan number eighteen dash zero two, conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero two, categorical exemption. The applicant is fourteen fifteen Garvey LLC. The location is fourteen fifteen West Garvey Avenue North. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting this as well.
Just going to wait until everybody gets settled in. Good evening again, planning commissioners, members of the public. The item before you is, is a proposed eighty thousand eighty-six square foot, five-story building for an assisted living memory care facility use. The precise plan is required for the physical development of the subject site, including the building's architecture and site plan, and the conditional use permit is required for the use itself. The, the project site is a forty-eight thousand twenty square foot lot located on the north side of West Garvey Avenue and on the, just west of the, of North Sunset Avenue, which is the street right along here. The site consists of the thirty, thirty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-four square feet parcel, which is the one that's highlighted in yellow, and a thirteen thousand one hundred eighty-six square feet of city-owned land that will be vacated as part of this project. The city-owned land is, oops, the city-owned land is right along here. It is an existing landscape or greenway right along the side of Sunset Avenue. The site is currently developed with a one-story, eight thousand twenty-nine square foot office building that was constructed in nineteen fifty-six. The existing structure and parking lot will be demolished as part of this project and a new building would be constructed. The site is Zoned Neighborhood Commercial, which is NC. The site is surrounded by a motel, the site is surrounded by a motel to the, to the west, right along here. The Hustler Hollywood Store to the east, right across Sunset Avenue, and a three-story multifamily residential apartment complex on the north, right along here. And it's also surrounded by the, on the south is the I-ten freeway. According to the business operation plan, the target market for the assisted living facility are seniors approximately eighty years old as an average age that need assistance from caregivers for one or more activities of daily living. And the target market for the memory care facility are typically adults seventy years, approximately seventy years old and need twenty-four hour supervised care for diagnosed memory impairment. The facility itself would have a total of fifty full-time employees. The facility will have approximately twenty-five employees present at its peak during normal Here is the project site plan. The building, the proposed building itself, keep on doing that, the proposed building itself is V-shaped. It conforms to the, or follows the, the shape of the lot itself, where it's narrower towards the street and it gets wider towards the rear. And in a centralized location at the rear, there is a memory, the memory care courtyard. The building design is supplemented with both organic and organic landscaping consisted, consisting of wood arbors, water fountain sculptures, concrete pavers, ground cover shrubs and trees that create sitting and recreational areas surrounding the building. So there, there's going to be arbors right around the building and also sitting areas for the residents to enjoy. The project also includes construction of concrete block perimeter walls along the west side of the property, the north side of the property, and also the east side of the property. At the bottom of the slope, there would be, a retaining wall would be constructed with a six-foot tall fence on top. The fence and the, the wall would be decorative. The block wall would be finished with a stucco finish to match the building and the fence would be made out of a decorative type material. According to the arborist, well, the arborist report identifies fourteen trees that will be removed as part of the project and those fourteen trees are located along the city-owned slope. A tree removal permit was not included as part of this application process because currently the, the slope is still owned by the city and so a tree removal permit is still required and is conditioned as a condition of approval. And the tree removal permit, according to the West Covina Municipal Code, would have to be approved by the city's maintenance division and also the city's planning, planning director. And with that, that, again, that's included as a condition of approval. And along with this condition of approval, the city, or we are requiring that the, the fourteen trees removed be replaced on a two-to-one basis, meaning for every tree that's removed, two more trees are planted to replace the trees being removed. As far as the site is concerned, there is approximately nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet of landscaping being proposed throughout the site. And the, this landscaping calculation does not count any landscaping that's less than three feet wide and also any landscaping that's less than twenty-four square feet in area. And also, in doing this calculation, I did not count the landscaping that's proposed on the rooftop deck. This landscaping that is being proposed is more than twice the minimum requirement that the city has. This is the proposed rendering of the building. The architectural style of the building is modern. The proposed modernist architectural style is, is well represented in the detailing and building materials utilized, which include a two-story glass entryway along the front, which is the focal point of the building itself. There is some light wood detailing and metal window mullions and muntens. Stone and, and beige cream-colored stucco walls are going to be proposed on the elevations. The exterior of the building will be, will include a mixture of light and brown and Here is the proposed south elevation, which is also a cross-section that shows the, what the basic profile of the building would look like in comparison to the surrounding uses. The height of the building in itself from, as measured from lowest grade to the highest point, the highest point, which is the top of the elevator shaft, is seventy-five feet tall. The, the building itself, which is measured from lowest grade to the top of the building, is sixty feet tall. This is going to be, this five-story building is going to be the only five-story building in the area. The existing motel is two-story and so is the building across the street, across from Sunset Avenue, which is the Hustler Hollywood Retail Store. This is the east elevation as it's profiled right next to the, the three-story apartment building to the north. Staff has some minor concerns that the proposed building, again, will only, will be the only five-story building in the area and is approximately thirty-five to fifty percent taller than the surrounding buildings. However, the, the city municipal code does not have a height limit for buildings more than one hundred feet from single-family residential zones, except in the downtown area. And just for the record, that the proposed site is greater than one hundred feet away from any single-family residential property in the city. Again, this is the west elevation with the apartment complex profiled next to it on the north, right along here. And then the, the north elevation with the motel profiled against, next to it. Staff, as part of the environmental, there was a shade and shadow study conducted and was completed to determine if the proposed building would cast shadows on any adjacent sensitive uses. Basically, sensitive uses are considered to include routinely usable outdoor spaces associated with residential, recreational or institutional uses, pedestrian-oriented outdoor space, restaurant seating, nurseries and solar collectors. Within the general vicinity, the only place that, or the only item or place that's, that has a sensitive, shade-sensitive use is the apartment complex to the north of the project site, which has a swimming pool as, in, in the middle of the property, as shown on the shade and shadow study. According to the shade and shadow study, the proposed building would not cast any shadows on the apartment complexes, outdoor swimming pool and recreation areas. There, there are some shade and shadows casted on the pool itself, but that's coming from the existing building in itself. So it, it, the, the shadow that's casted on the swimming pool in the shade and shadow study has nothing to do with the project site. Staff had also some concerns that, that shade would be casted on, along the residential properties that face south towards the project site. And in this, according to this shade and shadow study, the sunlight will be blocked during the spring, fall and winter solstice between eight and, between eight to four P.M. However, the shadows casted during this time period would only be for, for two to three hours at a time during the spring and fall. This, this particular shade and shadow diagram is for the spring equinox. As you can see from the arrows along the bottom on the different timeframes, the shade shifts. So not one particular area is completely blocked off for all eight hours. So it's only, shade is, shade and shadow is only present for, for two to three hours during the eight-hour study period. During the, during the summer, there is, there's going to be complete light. There is no, there is no shade or shadow casted along that, that particular building. And then again, on, during the fall equinox, between, around ten, there is shade, there's partial shade along the, the front of the residential and it shifts so that not one particular location is completely shaded. The only exception is the winter, which in the winter, the whole area is particularly, This brings to the discussion on parking. The proposed parking area is subterranean. The entrance to the parking lot is through Garvey Avenue, which has a ramp that goes down into the parking lot. The parking requirement for convalescent facilities was used to determine the number of parking spaces needed. The parking requirement is one space for every two beds. There will be a total of one hundred seven beds in this facility. Therefore, fifty-four parking spaces are required. The projects, the project itself provides fifty-five parking spaces, three of which are handicap parking spaces, which are right along the, the front or near the entry. Terry Hayes and Associates completed, completed the initial study in environmental analysis for the project and determined that the project qualifies for class thirty-two categorical exemption, which is for infill development. So in order to qualify for the infill development exemption, several technical studies were conducted, one of which is a traffic analysis. And the traffic, the traffic analysis concluded that the project would not create any significant traffic impacts on the study intersections in the future. The noise, the noise study concluded that the only noise associated with the, with the particular uses, the construction noise when the building is being constructed. And with this, basically, a condition of approval is being included to, to, to limit construction hours from eight A.M. to eight P.M., which is consistent with construction noise throughout the entire city. Therefore, there is no significant effects related to noise. As far as air quality and greenhouse, greenhouse gases concerned, the project would not result in significant regional or localized emissions during construction activities. There, the project will have no impact on, or no significant impact on water quality. The existing building is not deemed as historic, so there is no impact on historic resources if the building is going to be demolished. The facility is served, is adequately served by all utilities, water, power, sewer. It has adequate, it has adequate service and it also has adequate public services that are provided, such as fire and police. In conclusion, that the, for the proposed use will provide needed support services for senior citizens. The development is in compliance with the zoning code and will replace an underused building in sight. The project is compatible with the commercial and residential uses in the vicinity and will result in additional housing opportunities in the city. With this, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions approving precise plan number eighteen dash zero two and conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero two. The applicant is here. If you have any questions for the applicant, they are available. And also, if you have any questions for staff, I'm also available to answer.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Holtz, put your mic on, please.
Did I understand you're right to say there was a hundred and seven beds?
Yes.
Okay. And there's only three handicap parking spots?
They are providing three handicap. They are providing three handicap parking spots. As far as the handicap parking is concerned, that, the handicap parking is regulated by building and safety and they will make sure that there is sufficient parking, handicap parking space on site.
Even though it's a, it's a. Even though it's a, it's a, a retirement-type way?
Um, yes.
With the elderly?
Yes. And from, from my understanding, a lot, a lot of the residents do not drive.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Kennedy?
I got a question. Were, were the residents on Yalton notified?
I'm sorry?
The residents on Yalton, the Street Yalton? Were they ever notified about this project?
Um, all, all, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't have the list with me right, right now. However, all properties within three hundred feet from the site, all property owners and residents were notified.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay.
Just, well, let me make sure I understand. So Commissioner Kennedy, Yalton is the street directly to the west. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. It's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a, those people, those residents, those residents are impacted the most.
They are the most impacted.
Absolutely.
Single-family residents is correct.
Yes, they are.
The, the apartment to the north is also residential, but it's multifamily. But you're correct. It's hard, it's hard to know without, we, and we, you know, we can, we can find that out tonight, if, if that's something that you need to know to make a decision. But my, my, my guess on that is that some of those residents were noticed. The closer they were to Garvey, the more likely they would have been to be noticed.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hockes?
Yes, I guess just to follow up with what Commissioner Kennedy was asking about. The, there was a community meeting held in February of 2018, and would the, was the outreach for that community meeting, you know, in line with the notifications that were made within three hundred feet?
Correct, yes. And, and the applicant might be able to better answer that.
Or was it, or did it extend beyond that in some way?
Yeah, let, let me also just clarify for everyone's sake, what a community meeting is. A community meeting is generally held by the applicant, not by staff.
Right.
So they are the ones that do the notification.
And that'll be a question for them.
But I'm, yeah, we can ask it, but I got a acknowledgement that they did do the three-hundred-foot notification as part of that meeting.
Any other questions of staff? Chaney?
I guess we're at notifications. How many residents were notified, or, or commercial properties?
Three hundred and one.
That's three hundred and one people were notified. That's, that, that's going to be a mixture of property owners and residents. So every resident in the apartment complex was notified, correct, Joanne?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot of folks that live in that apartment complex to the north. That's why it adds up to three hundred and one.
So could that three hundred and one just only for the apartment complex?
No, no. Everyone in a three-hundred-foot radius was notified.
Do you have the radius by any chance?
Um, okay, so, I'll put up a...
The applicant is waving that they have it on. So when, when we get to them, you can ask them that question.
Any other questions of staff that they can't answer?
I don't know if this is, to what extent you can answer this. You mentioned, Joanne, that there's going to be a replanting of, of trees, where trees will be removed along the slope.
Yes.
Along Sunset Avenue, that, and those are trees that are within the public right-of-way?
That's correct.
Correct? And, and the replacement would be two, two trees for everyone removed?
That's correct.
Correct. Are there any specifics as regard to the establishment of those trees that are in the condition, proposed conditions, or conditions that, to ensure that, you know, any tree that, that dies will be replaced? And, and what kind of, you know, if, was there, you know, review in terms of the landscape planned, you know, to ensure, you know, proper irrigation?
Typically, for, for projects that require entitlements prior to the issuance of building permits, they would, the applicant would have to submit a landscape and irrigation plan. The landscape and irrigation plan is forwarded to our landscaping consultant. They review the, the landscaping and irrigation for the project, and also they make sure that it complies with the California Model Water Efficiency Ordinance for, for, to make sure that the, for drought, basically for drought-tolerant landscaping. And as far as the, the maintenance of the plantings, the city does require that the plantings be maintained in, in a healthy condition. And if, as far as the, the replacement plantings are concerned, fif, it's going to be fifty percent twenty-four-inch box and the, and fifty percent, I believe, thirty, thirty-six-inch box.
Okay. So, so are, is there something in the condition as regard to replacement of, of trees that, that don't establish and maybe, maybe die?
Well, no, we don't, we, we, we have, we don't, never had, I'm not aware of a city ever putting that kind of condition. In my experience, doesn't mean cities haven't. But generally, in my understanding, the contract between the app, the owner of the property and whoever they hire generally includes that. When you look at the landscape plan, it's usually listed in the maintenance on page, how, how long that, that replacement period lasts.
Okay.
And just to, to clarify too, that those are conditions Y and Z on the, on the resolution on page seven of the Precise Plan Resolution.
And also to add to that, the, the trees, the trees and land, any landscaping on the site would have to be, be maintained in a healthy condition. If, if it ever becomes a property maintenance, property maintenance issue where plantings are dead, or plantings are lacking or not replaced, then it becomes a code enforcement issue.
Any other questions of staff? No? All right. Okay, let's have the applicant. Alicia Bartley, is that you? Come forward, please.
Thank you for your time tonight and your consideration. My name is Alicia Bartley. On behalf of the applicant, I'm from Gaines and Stacy. First, we would like to thank staff for the very thorough staff report and all the work that they put on in this project. We have met with them several times over the past year and a half or so that this has been pending, and the, your staff did a very wonderful job in working with us and making this project better. Tonight, on behalf of the applicant team, I have with me Elon Kennick. On behalf of the ownership, I have representatives from Solvair, who's the proposed operator. I have Kristen and Sanjeev. And on behalf of the architect's office, I have Cole Garrison here. And again, we are here to answer any questions that you have. To respond to some of the questions that you asked of staff, first, with regard to having a hundred and seven beds and three handicap spaces, it is, it is true that the, this is not a, this is not a retirement community per se, this is really an assisted-living facility. And at this point, in this stage, in, in most, in the residents' lives, they most likely will not be driving. So we do believe that there are more than sufficient handicap spaces on the site. With regard to the, the notice, I have the radius map here.
Oh, great.
And we do show that we did provide notice to these residents on, on Yalton. It looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties. Not with me tonight is, from our team, is our community outreach consultant, Ira Handelman of Handelman Consulting. He actually, when we note, we did do the, the three-hundred-foot notice for the community meeting back last year, and prior to that meeting, he did actually walk this street, recognizing that this was a single-family neighborhood that was most impacted by the project, and extended the invite for, for those community members to come, to come to the meeting. I will say that none of them did come to, come to the meeting. We did have, from the community meeting, that, who came was, I believe there was a business owner, a pharmacy owner across the street that was interested in the project coming in. And with that, I won't take up too much more time because the staff report was very thorough, but we have, again, our entire team here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions of staff or the team? This is a big project. There's no questions for anybody.
Yeah, very exciting.
Well, I have a question. You know, how do you go about acquiring residents? You know, I mean, how does that work?
Maybe. This is an answer for our consultant, or our, from Solvair.
Thank you. The mic's on. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, how do we go about acquiring residents?
General outreach, so education, becoming the expert in the senior living industry, meaning we go out with support groups for those caregivers caring for older adults. We have support groups for those dealing with family members with dementia, doctors, rehabs, all of those medical professionals in the area. We explain what our services are, and we promote those services and show our availability to the greater community. In addition to that, there are some more traditional advertising methods that we promote. The community is opening, it's a new offering for older adults in the area. What do we offer in terms of programming, lifelong learning, both physical and mental activities, as well as care?
I have a question about the generation of employment opportunities that the facility will create. Can you tell us about that?
As they mentioned, fifty, the equivalent of fifty full-time employees will be on-site, twenty-five at the most during any shift. There are three shifts during the day. There's a seven to three, three to eleven, eleven to seven, because there is twenty-four-seven care. And then department heads are there during the normal business day to greet customers, et cetera. Those employment opportunities range from minimum-wage direct-to-line staff, from housekeeping and dishwashing and servers, up to department heads, skilled nurses, et cetera.
Maybe for you or somebody else. I read somewhere there's a, the dining, a bistro, and a bar, somewhere on the top floor or the roof, or?
Sure. So I'm Cole Garrison, the architecture office, GMPA Architects. So there are various amenities on the property. On the ground floor, as you come in, there is a bistro, and that's intended to supplement the regular dining room, the dining room as the, you were just upper, you could talk about the, all the different dining experiences, but what we've designed in is a place for people who aren't dining at a regular breakfast, lunch, or dinner, to come and maybe purchase some things, sit at a counter, have a coffee, grab a sandwich. There's also the regular dining room. And on the rooftop, there is an outdoor cooking facility, where they might have a barbecue or, you know, a meal served on the rooftop. But I don't know that there's a bistro or a bar other than the one on the ground floor.
Okay, so there is, well, okay, so there's a bar on the ground floor, right?
It, yeah, there's a, there's a counter with, with, with various things that you can order, probably would include wine or beer, if that's going to be allowed, I don't know.
Okay, and this is exclusive to the residents, correct? It's, it's not a public, uh...
And we won't be selling it.
Come on, come on up.
Just to clarify that, so...
Yeah, operations.
Yeah, operations. Bistro bar, meaning in the morning, more of a coffee shop, continental breakfast coffees, and happy hours, complimentary happy hours once or twice a week, depending on what the residents want. But it is not a traditional bar where there's alcohol for sale.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
The, of the, of the total number of residents that, capacity of residents, how many residence spaces are, I guess, allotted toward, for memory care in total?
Fifteen.
Yeah, the member, there's, there are private suites, there are ten private suites, and there are five semi-private, which is, you might have a roommate. So that might be a number up to twenty memory care residents potentially.
Can I ask any particular reason? Because the rooms are quite large, actually, the suites. Is that a standard size, or?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have designed RCFE properties, you know, we, we have usually at least three or four of them actively going through our office at any time. And in general, this is a standard size for suites. They can be smaller if it's going to be a very economical project. This is, you know, not the smallest suites we've ever provided, but it's, it's, it's within the standards that we are generally designing to.
Does it look like?
Well...
It, it looks like...
Uh-huh. If you look at the unit plans, so as I mentioned on page A two-point-one-zero are the memory care. So there's like a, a private one, and then a semi-private that might have a roommate. In the assisted living, we have three typical floor plans we're showing, and they have, you know, private bedroom and a common area in one. They have a private one-bedroom and a common area in the second one. And then the third one is really a studio style, where they don't have an additional living room. The bed and the living is all in one room.
Quite interesting.
Yes, and the largest is a two-bedroom, seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And the smaller studio is four-hundred-and-ten square feet.
If I want to move in tomorrow, what's going to cost me?
It's not something I...
Not something you'd do. Is there, is there a ballpark figure we can, yeah?
So approximately thirty-eight-hundred a month, up to around five-thousand a month, depending on the size of the apartment. That's why there's a variety of sizes. There's a price point there. And then there's levels of care, based on how much care someone needs, there are levels of care.
And the memory care would be probably at the higher end of, of that, I would think.
Exactly. Yes, the staffing ratio is much higher, it requires much more care.
So for the memory cares, is that only on the...
The first floor?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the memory care and the other residents are completely separate. The memory care have to be in a secured area. That's why they have their own private courtyard that has a fence and a gate around it. They're, they're own separate geographical group of people.
So on your second, third, fourth, fifth, there's no memory care?
No, that's all assisted living on the upper floors.
I see. And then also your rooftop, it's only for residence use?
Yes.
Assisted living.
Assisted living, I see.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or the team? No? Great. Thank you so much. Any other, I have no other cards in favor. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Nope? Okay. We will go to those in opposition. I have two cards. Francisco Lucio, come forward, sir. It appears this gentleman lives on Yalton Avenue.
Yes, I do.
All right.
I think it's a good idea. My main thing is the traffic. That study is one-hundred percent wrong. There's already a traffic problem in the area. What was, when you have three shifts, you know they're going to overlap. So right there, there's traffic conditions. What was missed, when you go on Garvey, a little bit east, there's other apartments over there. Their traffic comes in this direction, most of them anyway. Further down, you have Kaiser, and then on the, across Roberto Avenue, you have another Kaiser, and Dialysis Business, and another hotel farther down. So there is traffic in the area. It is going to get worse. When you get off the freeway and you turn north at that intersection, there's always a traffic jam. So people moving from here, they're going to go either that direction or the other direction. And the people in that intersection block it sometime. That makes it even worse. So if you're going to go around on Yalton back to Sunset, the traffic light there in the morning, with morning traffic and afternoon traffic, only three or four cars can go through the signal, because it changes so fast. I mean, I know, because I lived there. I know the directions. And when they get off the freeway, they're flying, going west. We all know that. So there is going to be traffic increase and traffic problems. They are going to improve the area, there's no doubt. The shrubbery, don't worry about it. It needs to go. The building is going to be improvement. I would, however, like to see it one floor less, because it is going to be high. The other one that's, that's just north of there, it's like you said, she said, three stories. So this is going to be another story. So I would like to see it less. The other concern I have is, in an emergency, how are fire engine trucks going to get? The other concern I have is, in an emergency, how are fire engine trucks going to get there? Where are they going to be? How's the access for police, for ambulances? Right now, in the two hotels west of there, whenever they deliver something, they stop on Garvey, and they block part of that street where you have to go to the other side to pass them. So, where are their delivery trucks going to park? Will they be parking out in the street, blocking traffic? I believe so. I mean, I don't know the exact plans, but that's what it looks like. So, I would like to see you consider the traffic problem that is going to happen, and then any of the delivery trucks and emergency services. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Mr. Lucio, Commissioner has a question.
One question. Okay, so, I go up to Yalton, and I want to make a left, and I, and I go right in from the huster where this, it stops. You know, the cars getting off the freeway, the cars getting off the freeway don't have to stop, but you have to stop. Now, does that, how, how much does that back up on the average?
Right there?
Yes, okay, so, so if I leave Yalton, I make a left onto Garvey, and I come to the stop in front of the.
Quite a bit.
So, is it ten cars, is, is it, is it bad?
It, it varies, you know, obviously, you know, during traffic times, it varies a lot, because these, sometimes they even back up from going north onto the freeway. They're backed up into the freeway, not into the, you know, the exit. So, yes, it does, it does block that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I have one more card in opposition, John Shoemaker.
I've got a couple items. One is, I couldn't find anything that said what the notification consisted of. And I've seen notifications on things that are city put out, that were extremely misleading than others who have put out for the project. It'd be something like, using example, I'm not sure what was here, if they have it, I'd love to see it. Senior assisted living facility going in to help those, you know, that type of thing, without really mentioning that it's a, you know, it's sixty, sixty-foot building that's going to overlook without many details. I mean, I, I remember over the years where I live, things going out about things that were happening in BKK. I lived there, I was involved with the group, and I'd sit there and read this and go, wow. Not have a clue as to what they were talking about, or it was misleading. The other thing, too, is, you know, you start mentioning seniors, and you, and you mention the cost, and the cost of $3,800 to $5,000 was for the room, if I'm correct, plus the medical attention. So, this isn't to help, you know, some poor senior who needs a place to stay. This is a fairly well-off senior who can probably afford, you know, $70,000 to $100,000 a year, you know, that type of thing. And I don't know how many people realize that. When you were talking about the shadows, you know, part of the year, that apartment building is completely in shadows. You know, and I don't think that's something probably people realize, that, you know, if my apartment is such that certain times of the year, I have my son coming in through my window, and it's nice to see, that's going to disappear part of the year. And I'm not sure everybody is fully aware of that. The other thing, too, I always love things like, you know, statistics. When I was in, in college, I had a professor that said, if they give you the stat, ask for the real number. If they give you the number, ask for the stat. And the example was, our profits increased 100%. Sounds great, right? Well, we went from one to $2. Or, our sales went up $100 million, our sales went up $1 million. Yeah, you went from $100 million to $101 million. Not that big of a deal, is it, when you talk about it? So, when they say things like, well, we're only going to use less than 1% of the electricity that's delivered, the gas that's delivered, and water that's delivered, you know, what's the percentage that we have today? And remember, there's going to be some projects coming before you, like Starwood, that could have 10 to 15 times more residential units in it. You know, I keep getting raises in my water bills and things like that, because we don't have enough. Well, they're telling us they're going to use 1% more. Also, parking, three handicap parking. Okay, maybe a lot of these residents don't have cars. Some of them might, one, two, or three out of 107. And I guess everybody who's going to come visit them are in perfect condition, don't need any, any help. You know, I'm 80 years old, and I live in a, assistant living, and I don't drive, and naturally, everybody who comes to visit me is going to be in perfect health, so they don't need any. You know, what's the likelihood of that occurring? And parking, in my mind, anyway, has always been crazy. Two parking, one parking space per two beds. Well, they've already told us during the day, half of them are gone because of staff. Because of staff, right by itself. Then you have shift changes. The other concern I have with this project, outside of the five stories, which I think is ridiculous in that area, is how in an emergency is everybody going to get out of there? Because it sounds like on off-shifts, they're going to have maybe 10 people? Get 107 people out of there? And also take into account that unfortunately, you know, when you have assistant living and things like that, you have people who are in ill health. What is the impact on the fire station there that's going to have to come to those calls over and over again? My wife goes to Dialysis, and she, she's gotten to know the firefighters out of the station that handle DeVita very well, because they're always in and out of there. So, I think there's a lot of things we need to look at before this thing is fully approved, especially the site, because once you approve that, as you said, you can't take it back. So, we need to make sure that, you know, neighborhood commercial, to me, I don't think anybody thinks is a five-story building. Thank you.
John, before you go, let me, you mentioned the notice of public hearing, how it was worded. Let me just tell you.
Yeah, because I did, I, you know, I'm just.
Right, no, I have it here. I'll read you the request. This went out to the 300 people. A request for approval of a precise plan and conditional use permit to construct an 80,000, 86-square-foot, five-story assisted living memory care facility with one level of subterranean parking. The applicant is requesting approval of a precise plan for site layout and architecture, and a conditional use permit for the operation of an assisted living memory care facility, skilled nursing, skilled nursing facilities, and assisted living facilities. That's the description of the project. I mean, it's, it's there.
Yeah, but, you know, sometimes you don't have these where it makes clear, like a picture with a rendering of what that, you know, five-story building looks like.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why we have the hearing.
Yeah, well, but, you know, not, not everybody is paying attention to that, because they don't realize, you know, you start to build it, then you have people go, what happened? That's what we're ready on.
Okay, those are the only cards I had in opposition. No, you've already spoken, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyone else who hasn't spoken in opposition? I don't see anybody else. Okay, do you want to speak, sir? Are you in opposition, or?
I don't think we're opposition, it's just more of a concern about the parking.
Well, you can come on up, sir, and we'll hear you. And fill out a card when you get a chance for our minutes, and state your name when you get up here, please.
My name's Cole Crawford, I'm a resident on Yalton. And just looking at the amount of parking spaces, and even today, I worked at an assisted living facility in Claremont, they get a lot of traffic, a lot of people visiting them. Even some of the residents want to keep their cars, even though they shouldn't be driving. So, to me, that, that many spots is not going to be enough. They're going to be parking down Yalton, which we already have that mosque on the end, too. When they need to park down Yalton, it gets so crowded. And, I mean, I, no opposition to the building, even the height, you know, we could do privacy fences and things like that, but ultimately, yeah, I really don't think there is enough parking. And I think, do you guys have a plan as far as staging for the materials and stuff? Are you guys going to get the, the emergency easement?
They'll deal with that, they'll come back up and we'll talk to them.
I'm sorry, I guess. But, that's one concern, is staging the materials, just the amount of materials alone that are going to go into here, how many concrete trucks they're going to need. Just using Garvey would not work. They would need to get that easement in ahead of time to be able to bring in the trucks off of that side, you know? But those are really my only concerns. But, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. So, would you like to come back up, Alicia, and comment rebut on what you've heard?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to address the first one, or the easy one first, because we've got the site plan up on the screen. There was a comment about emergency access. As you can see from the site plan, we have emergency access coming off of Sunset, and that is for emergency vehicles only, it's not for regular, regular use. And then we also have access on, on Garvey, and we've got labeled right there, deliveries and unloading, right up in the, that corner off of Garvey. So, our site can accommodate these things onsite without having to block any traffic or cause any impacts to Garvey or Sunset. Do you have something to add?
Yes, on that specifically, in our submittal was an emergency access site plan that we passed through the fire department. So, we work directly with the fire department to be sure that all their access needs were met.
Next, I will go to the, the issue of height. Yes, we do acknowledge that this will be a taller building than, than, in the neighborhood. We also emphasize, or we also point out that we do have very, very deep setbacks from both streets. And so, I think that the impacts of the height, I think, from, from anybody going by on the streets, will, it won't, it won't appear to be as tall as it is. The other thing that I do want to say is that projects like this work because of the economies of scale. And having the number of bedroom, of beds there that, that we've proposed is really essential to the, to the business plan. The next point that I will make, having to do with, with parking. Maybe our operator can come and speak to this, to what, how much the parking is utilized in other projects that they handle. In my experience, this, this, this is well-parked. Actually, this is kind of off-topic. I sit on the Neighborhood Council for the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and we had recently had one of these come into our community as well. And the, the operator in that case came with a list of all of her, the other properties that they owned and how, how they were parked. And they were, on average, using less than 50% of the parking that was required by code. So, these projects do tend to be overparked, and you can tell me if you disagree.
That's correct.
Yeah. Construction staging, yes, we, we do have a plan for construction staging, and that will all be onsite, as I'm sure our project will be conditioned on. So, I think those were all of the issues. Am I missing any of the issues? I think that was, that's all I've got on my notes. Was there any?
Delivery trucks, did that, we talked about that, right? Delivery, covered that? Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Oh, the, the number of handicaps, yes.
Oh, right, the deliveries. So, the, the access on the bottom right, that's for emergency vehicles only, will not be used for deliveries, will not be, you know, using that area, that's strictly for emergency access. So, the deliveries will come off of Garvey. There's a very deep driveway, so a long truck can park in there and do a three-way turn back out again. There's plenty of width for cars to go by if it needs to do that. Most of the deliveries will be by van, though, that can go down into the garage. There's a delivery parking space in the garage, there's a freight elevator in addition to two passenger elevators. So, we have a delivery plan so that they can deliver all the way up to the roof from the garage. Yes, so, so down in the, in the parking, we've accommodated delivery trucks. On-site, if a, if a delivery is coming up to the front door, and for some reason, the person doesn't go down to the driveway, there is site access all the way around the building to the kitchen area, so they won't have to make deliveries through the lobby.
And the last point was having to do with the number of handicap parking stalls. Once again, we are providing the number that's required by the Building and Safety Code. Perhaps our operator can speak to this, but I imagine that if all the park, the handicaps parking, parking spaces are taken up, and somebody requires assistance, that a staff person from the facility can assist in either parking the car, or, or however it needs to happen to, to accommodate that.
And that's correct.
Yeah.
We have a full-time, we have a full-time concierge slash receptionist that's there to assist if there's someone that needs extra accommodation. They'll either let it run idle, or if it's in a fire lane, they'll move the car for them and make adjustments for that.
Now, how many, you operate others, correct? How many others do we, do you operate?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So, in your experience and history, what type of issue, or is there an issue with visitors' parking? I mean, do, do these folks get a lot of visitors, or some, or?
Family, and there are certain times of the day, or certain events, you know, that are going on at the community, Mother's Day, Father's Day, especially, when you might get more visitors. But we accommodate by having staff carpool. We make announcements to staff to ensure that we have plenty of parking.
And they would be permitted to park subterranean in the?
Correct.
In those 55 spaces that are underneath, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, on a, on a daily, just a regular, every day, how many people, how many of those spaces are filled every day, do you think, 55?
If you're looking at 25 maximum staff members at any one time, and that's if everyone drives their own car, and doesn't use any public transportation whatsoever, so most of them will drive, we account for that at 25, then you're looking for, on average, five to eight visitors at any given time. So, there's still plenty of parking. Typically, what we find is less than 15% of the residents keep their cars for assisted living, and none, none for memory care, of course.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, she's there. Commissioner.
I guess since parking might be an issue, and the neighbors are concerned regarding parking, can you go one more level down?
No, we, we, it's cost prohibitive to go another level down of parking. And especially considering the fact that we experience shows that these types of, these types of projects are historically over, overparked. So, incurring that expense for, you know, a what-if, I think is just, it's an, it's an unfair burden, I think, on this, on this project.
Any other questions of the applicant? Well, she is there.
I have a question for Jeff.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Oh, yeah. So, I think for right now, we're good. Thank you. I shall now close the public hearing. Public hearing is now officially closed. I mean, the public testimony portion, not, not the public hearing, that's still going on. Go ahead, Commissioner Kennedy.
Jeff, I was curious if we could, I have to agree with Cole that, that there probably might be a parking issue eventually. Think we could permit that street? Parking permitted?
Well, that is always possible. The, that is generally a neighborhood decision, that they petition our engineering department, and then the engineering department does a mail, it basically, it's a ballot.
Well, could, could, could we ask them? Because I think it's going to be an issue in the future.
I, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner Kennedy, but we can definitely look into it. Generally, it's been my understanding that that is sort of a ground-up, not a, not a city request, it comes from the ground up. So, the neighborhood could request it, but let me do this and look into it with our engineering department and see if there's, you know, what, what the, the status would be.
Okay, thank you. Question?
Also, regarding a project this big, Jeff, has there any sign or any posting on the? On-site.
Yes.
So, that the residents are on that area? Because according to my understanding, there's only seven resident really just got the notification. Besides the apartment owners and the, next to it is the hotel, and then the apartment owners. So, you only get those, mainly those two property with only seven resident potentially just know about this? And is there any signs or anything that they can see, you know, now that you had rendering of the building?
There, there was a public hearing notice posted onsite. This, the public hearing notice is required by, by planning, the Planning Commission resolution. So, that was posted onsite 30 days prior to the hearing.
What's being posted? Is it a rendering? How big is it? Is it a poster size?
It wasn't a rendering. It, what was posted, what was, was included in the Planning Commission resolution in, which is basically, it's, it describes what the project is going to be and when the public hearing is going to be held.
So, it's one of those letter that the resident had pointed out?
It's basically a four-by, four-foot by eight-foot con, uh, concrete, plywood sheet that's painted sort of like a, a notice on the Garvey elevation, I assume is where.
It's on the Garvey elevation, yes.
But no rendering of the building itself in terms of what it looks like?
No, that's not required, it's part of the Planning Commission resolution. That's not required as part of the planning commission resolution.
It's the typical notice that's posted.
Yes, and we've been doing, well, I look at Herb, because he's been sitting there a long time, but I think it even predates Herb. I think we've been doing this about 18 years, 17, 18 years, this certain process.
But if the applicant at a later date wants to put something up there, they could do that, can't they?
They can do that, yes. We have a coming soon board that a place that's under construction can sort of put up something.
Well, it's like Merrill Gardens. I mean, they put up a rendering, you know, of, not to mention competition, but they put up a rendering, a big board with a picture of the building.
That's before the approval or after?
No, that's after. That's after. Any other questions of staff or... So we'll close that up. We'll start with commission discussion. Who would like to go first on this one?
Well, let's have a discussion first.
That's what we're doing. We're going to discuss. You want to go first?
I don't care. No, I'm pretty excited about it, because that's been a kind of a blighted area for a long time, and I think it's going to be, when I saw the renderings of the buildings and all that, I think it's going to be very modern. It's going to add to that whole area as a very, you know, positive thing. And I'm glad to hear that the few residents we have are on Yalton that are right next to it are very much in favor of it. So that's always a positive, and, you know, I just think it'll be a great add to the city. I really do. I wish you good luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Holtz, Commissioner Hing?
I think it's a great project. However, I have some concern and reservations regarding the parking was one of them. Instead of putting parking or issuing parking permit, I believe we should look into different type of parking situation to resolve their issues, because that's going to be an operational and daily issue once it's opened up. So instead of inundating the neighborhood with all the guest parking or what have you, we need to come up with some. And then also, another thing is that it's such a huge project, and I like it, not to say that I don't, but I like to see if you can put some renderations or something at that corner, or when the freeway's coming out, so that residents are aware of this huge project that's going on prior to approval. So I like to see that happening, so to get the community more involved in that sense.
Commissioner Hockes?
I'll go. I can somewhat reiterate with Commissioner Holtz about this being a very beneficial project from the standpoint of the aesthetic improvements. It's going to do that area. I'm also very, very pleased that it's another new business opportunity coming into the area that's going to provide a source of jobs, and that's going to be very valuable. Also, regarding the parking, I am, do share a little bit of that concern, but being familiar with how the, you know, the process works for permit parking on, you know, for the neighborhood along Yalton, you know, that's a process that's available to those residents should it emerge as an identifiable issue. And so there's no way to be 100% certain that it's going to occur, so there's certainly no reason to try to attempt to address it by some means as suggested to, you know, create a permit parking situation. So we're going to have to sort of iterate that and see what happens. But that process is available to the residents, and if they were to pursue that process and create a permit parking district on Yalton, then it would be, you know, on the assisted living facility to address that, you know, internally in terms of how they, you know, provide for parking for employees and visitors. And so I'm sure they can find a way to manage that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy, any thoughts?
So it's a beautiful project. Spent a lot of time, trust me. Took a long time to read all this. I have a lot of concerns. First of all, if I lived on Yalton, hell know what I want, a 75-foot building next to me. However, these guys don't, they seem to be okay with it. I actually think it's too big for that area, and I'm going to tell you exactly what's going to happen. These residents are going to get off the freeway and go, where the hell did this come from? Look at this. And who approved this? That's all we're going to hear, trust me. So I think parking eventually will be an issue. I think at some point, they're going to be parking down Yalton. I would like to see that restricted parking eventually. However, it is a beautiful project. It's, can't deny that, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. You know, we've all heard the old saying, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. You can only do so much to get people to react and to get involved, even if they are directly impacted. We've seen it here many, many times. They get noticed. I mean, you guys did your outreach. You had it right out here in the community room. I was here. I met Mr. Handelman that night. Nice guy, you know, kind of a bubbly personality, if I recall correctly. And, you know, they were here, you guys were here. I think it went on for three hours or something like that, you know, you had cookies and stuff. And questions were asked, questions were addressed, concerns were addressed, the project was laid out. It was there on boards, you know, 10, 12 boards. I think you were there, right? Yeah. And, you know, you guys were there. You made yourself available to the community, and those people that were impacted or not, anybody could show up and talk and get their questions addressed. And that's all you can do. You know, you can put, you put the hearing notice was posted, that's what you do. This is the way it works. There is a process. This is the process. You know, I mean, could you put up a rendering? But you don't even know if you're going to get approved at that point. You know, I mean, the same thing with the other project down the road. When they got the approval, they put the board up. You know, this is what's coming to your neighborhood, and they did the same thing. They had outreach, you know, they talked to residents and so forth. That's all you can do. And as far as the parking situation, sometimes we come up with solutions when we're not sure there's a problem. I mean, there could be a problem down the line, but there is a way to mitigate. If that happens, we can, you know, the residents can decide, hey, we want to take a look at restricting the parking. That's up to them. You know, Commissioner Kennedy, he's right, could happen. I don't know. But I'm agreeing with Commissioner Holtz on this. That area, and this has happened throughout the city, there are areas of, that, you know, needed attention. They were blighted. They were, you know, you go by that and you go, oh, man, you know, when is something going to come along and, you know, do something about it? Well, that's what you're doing. You know, it's five stories. I mean, okay, it's a little taller than the other, but it's, you made a good point, it's not going to look that tall when all of a sudden done. It's got, you know, it's got architectural elements that make it pleasant and pleasing. And, you know, I think as residents, you know, traverse the freeways, you know, as they go to portos, which a lot of them are doing, you know, this is a beautiful, a beautiful piece of architecture that's going to be there. It's modern. It's going to replace, and I'll tell you what, it jumpstarts other projects. This is what we see happen. Somebody's got to take the first step and do it, and then, you know, the word gets out, other developers, and especially in infill, you know, they start looking and go, oh, look at that. And then what do you know? All of a sudden, the whole area that's been blighted for 30 years is no longer that way. So, you know, I appreciate you coming into West Covina. It's a big investment. I think, you know, you're going to have naysayers, you know, every project has naysayers, but I think for the most part, you're going to have people that are going to be happy with it and going to be proud that you're here. And, you know, I for one, I'm glad to see it. I'll be supporting a motion when and if it's made, and we look forward to that building rising and that other stuff going away. So thank you. Any other comment or discussion on the item? If not, I'll entertain any comment from staff?
I can give you resolution numbers if you'd like.
That would be lovely.
Can I make a motion to approve?
There we go.
Second.
We have a, okay.
Car for the horse, as they say. Which is all fine. So the resolution for the precise plan would be 19-5998, and the resolution for the conditional use permit would be 19-599.
Okay, we have a motion by Holtz, second by Hockes, and let me make one other quick point. You know what I look for when I see a staff report like this? Variances. Guess what's not asked for on this project? Variances. None, no variances. It's a clean, clean project per code. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Reddell.
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. This action is final. Let's appeal to the city council within 10 days. And I thank you very much. Good luck, and welcome to West Covina. All right, well, let's see. Since those items didn't take as long as we thought, maybe we can knock out the study session for the subcommittee one-story guidelines. Thank you. Want to take a break for a minute? All right, to all of those of you still in attendance, oh, there he is. We will now go back in session and end the recess. There we go. Okay, so the next item is the study session, subcommittee for design review, one-story guidelines.
Yeah, so we talked about the two-story, and I'll get back to that in just a second. So I'm going to go through the one-story, but let's do talk about the two-story. So in your staff report, you'll recall that we had a study session some time back. I'm not remembering the date exactly, but it was probably in April or May, that we talked about the two-story guidelines, and there were several changes, fairly insignificant, but wording changes, text changes, that you suggested. I've made those on attachment two, and I'm not necessarily asking for a motion or anything, but I would like to know if you're comfortable with those in a general sense, or if you see anything that's not correct there, because we'd like to go ahead and start, publish these and start using these at the counter on a daily basis. So that's the purpose of attachment two. Now, attachment one is basically the one-story guideline. So I'm going to go through the one-story guidelines, and I will say this, I think all of you that are either serving on the subcommittee or have served on the subcommittee kind of have an understanding that one-story guidelines actually overlap a little bit with the two-story guidelines. The one-story guidelines have some broad architectural guidelines that apply to both one and two-story. But there are also one-story things that don't apply. So I'll go through them one at a time, and as I like to do, I'll pause for a second, and then if somebody has a comment, and then if not, I'll keep going. Number one, design the house so that all setbacks have been met. Number two, design the front and any other visible elevations, especially corner houses with variety of materials. Most houses have the exterior elevations that are primarily stucco. Providing an alternative material such as stone, wood, or simulated wood product, or brick will provide a more aesthetic elevation. Where alternative material is that the corner material should wrap around 24 inches on the side. So this is our, we normally refer to this as alternative material, and I refer to this as, you know, the best kind of cookie is a chocolate chip, because there's some accents in it, right? And that's what you're looking for in a house. You're looking for some chocolate chips in that, and it usually makes the house pop a little bit more. So that's what that one's all about. And also, in my experience in looking at West Covina, there are very, I'm not sure I've found any neighborhoods in West Covina that were built, and we're talking about in the '40s, '50s, and '60s, without some kind of alternative materials on them. So if you look at your neighborhoods you live in, you'll see if you have original houses there, there was brick, there was wood, there was flagstone, there was different kinds of materials, but they generally all had some kind of material on them to add interest. So this isn't something we're inventing. This is actually something we want to keep in place for West Covina. So that's number two. Number three, design the house to fit into the architectural context of the surrounding neighborhood, which is a bit subjective, but, you know, there's some lines that we can form on that. Number four, front porch roof line should be lower in height than the main portion of the roof. This one we came up with maybe 10 years ago, because we started getting people that were building porches that were the tallest feature of the house. And I'm not really sure if I understood what they were trying to achieve there, but it really was awkward-looking when they got built. So that's where we came up with this guideline, and we haven't had any problem with this lately. It seems like people understand it once you tell them. Or I shouldn't say, they probably understand before you tell them if they're using a designer. Number five, window treatment on windows are encouraged, including stucco popouts, wood trim, pot shelves, shutters, recessed windows, et cetera, or provide a variety of window types, bay windows, octagonal windows, or other shapes, et cetera. Consider painting window treatment in contrasting color to the house. So that's another way to add interest, to provide different types of window and window surrounds. No comments on that? Number six, provide the city-owned parkway width for the strip of property between the private property and the street. This is the area to allow for sidewalks or the widening of the street. So that's, we want to know what that is. Now, that's a very technical thing, but it's sort of been my life's goal as a planner to get people to put that on their plans. I don't think I've gotten anywhere. I think I have the same percentage that don't today as...
I'm so with you on that.
Yeah, and Greg understands, because he works in a city environment, that has an effect on the front setback. If they don't have their parkway right, then they don't have their front setback right, which means they may be asking to build something that doesn't meet code. And so this is a very important aspect of understanding where the lot line is. Number seven, a water heater enclosure should be constructed to match the colors and materials of the house, especially for water heaters added outside of the house located on a corner lot. So you may understand, sometimes you can buy these almost like aluminum-looking structures that can stick on. You know, we try to get people to build structures that match the house. Eight, if the roof pitch is being raised, consider designing the new pitch to allow the attic space to accommodate central air conditioning and heating system. So if you've ever seen a house with a ducting or an air conditioner on the roof, most of the time, they did it because the roof pitch wasn't tall enough to put a FAU unit in the attic. So that was unfortunate that the city allowed houses to be built like that, but we're looking to solve that in the cases where people are changing their roof line. All right. Now, moves are this good. You guys are still awake, right? Yes, okay. Number nine, landscaping that is removed or destroyed during the construction process shall be replaced prior to final inspection. So we go out there and look, it needs to be landscaped, not dirt. And then lastly, in an area that is predominantly developed with rear-entry garages, no garage doors should be installed on the front of the house. Now, that's an interesting one, too. It's a West Covina thing. I think it's a West Covina thing. I don't know. Some of you guys have lived or worked in other locations, but I've not known too many places that have what we call rear-entry garages, where you have to drive around the back of the house to get into the garage. But we have neighborhoods that were almost solidly developed like that, so this one was one of the last ones we put in to sort of, not necessarily say you can't do that, but at least provide that guideline to say, think about that. That goes back to this context. Does it fit into the context of the neighborhood?
Rear-entry garage situation? Is the rear-entry garage situation mostly where you have entry to the garage from an alley, or is it, are there other situations as well?
No, I've not, rarely with, for an alley. They're generally, you come in from the front, and you just kind of have to do a U-turn to get in the garage.
No.
It is quite interesting.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm familiar with seeing many of those.
Architecturally, I think the idea was you don't want to see garage doors. I think, I understand the aesthetic of that, but it doesn't work very practically for using it to park a car in.
But I believe there are some homes that have back alleys with garage entrances from the alley.
That is correct. We do have those as well.
The house is on Walnut Creek Parkway, in between Azusa and Holman Beck. They're all front garages.
Like a rear-entry garage?
No, they're, the garage is first, and then the house is back.
Yeah, yeah. Those are lovingly called snout houses.
Yeah, they're actually called dingbat houses. That's actually what they're called. I mean, that's what the term is called in the business.
Snout house.
All right.
Any comments on these guidelines? Any suggestions? Are we at that point now?
Yes, we are.
Okay. That we want to do here, now that they're in front of us? We're all... We're all, oh. You know what? I think we're pretty good. We can put a new date on it, then.
We can put a new date on it. We'll, what we'll do is we will, I don't necessarily need a motion or anything, because we didn't really have any direction on this one, but everybody, if everybody's good with the second story, we're gonna, we're gonna change the wording on that, get that at the counter, and then we'll continue using these things. And I, it seems like it's working. I think that, that we're, I think from what I'm understanding is happening at Subcommittee, that, that people are following these guidelines, and that makes life a lot easier for everyone. So, thank you very much.
The only, the one thing, you know, where it says it is encouraged, it should be encouraged, I think. Just so when you go print out 10,000 of them. Second one on the two-story, in an area that is predominantly one-story, it is encouraged that the size of the second story be reduced. So, it has the proper conjugation, exactly. Other than that, everything we ask for, you encourage, you've made part of it, so I'm happy with that. Yep. Yes. Okay, next is what? Item number five, which is just the forthcoming?
Correct. Well, actually, Commission Reports is next.
Okay, Commission, anybody have any comments, reports, miscellaneous? I just have one little quick thing that, you know, we spent a lot of time on this replanted recycling center. And poof, they're gone! In a, in a, in a heartbeat. And I think they're all gone, if I read that article correctly. I think they let everybody go and shut them all. So, you know, I mean, that's interesting to us, but it puts a dilemma on, I think, the state and the county and to provide proper recycling locations. So, that's, that's not our tossed salad. That's somebody else's. As far as comment, I just want to, I just want to, again, I can't say it enough. I mean, I want to thank you, especially Joanne and Jeff. You know, I mean, you had two huge issues tonight. And, you know, the, you know, the reports are, are excellent, and, you know, the information provided is, you know, just makes it easier for us to, you know, to make a decision on these things. And, you know, the, the, the service station deal that was, you know, ongoing and, you know, it's, it's had to find the rocks, you know, in the, in the pond to get across. And again, thank you so much. I appreciate. That's a lot of work. I know you guys, especially with Lydia not here right now, makes it even tougher. So, thank you very much. Any other comments? Then we can move to City Council.
You skipped me. So, Community Development Directors' Report, we do have a forthcoming. So, we have items for the next meeting, a couple items, and we probably have items for the next couple meetings, I think. So, so don't go anywhere. And then we are missing Lydia. And so, some of the things that you, I mean, I noticed some things we didn't get quite right. And most of that I, I blame Lydia for, so, but, but, but she's doing well, and we hope to get her back in, in about three weeks or so, so. I can, I can explain that to you. We are missing her right now, but I, I'd rather. And then, I do want to, I do want to I, I just say my, my spiel, and then we'll go on, because it's, it's always up to the planning commissioner, City Council, what they want to do. But I do, sometimes I think it's good to understand staff's, staff's challenges. We don't have a height limit in the non, in the non-commercial zones. So, that means when folks like this come in, I have no way of directing them if that's too high, too low. And, and, and as I understand it, five stories is kind of the definition of, of a certain type of construction. When you go over five stories, you start getting a higher cost of construction. So, five stories is kind of a, kind of a limit that a lot of people are gonna be, are gonna stop at. That's what the Colony did. You know, that, that is a limit, because, not because of anything anybody's doing, it's just because of construction techniques and cost. But the issues that, some of, many of the issues that we talked about tonight on this building were based because of the, the height, you know. You're not gonna have shadow impacts on a, very many shadow impacts on a three-story building, which is why you saw that tonight. It, it's, it, it puts staff in an uncomfortable situation, because then you get to the hearing and people comment about, well, why is it, why, why is a five-story building being proposed? Well, I, I, the staff doesn't have a way to stop it, because the code says you can. And as the chairman pointed out, they didn't propose any variances, because it was allowed. There are different ways to do height limits. You don't have to just put a, a cap on it. You could put a cap and allow people to request a higher height limit. And you could also put a distance, 250 feet away from single-family residential, some distance. So, there are ways to do it, by just, rather than just put a hard cap. But I guess I just want to make that, put that out there for, and I'm not necessarily advocating at this very moment for, for a code amendment, because we've got a lot on our plate on code amendments right now. But I am saying that it, just please understand that if someone wants a taller building and it, and it's outside the 100-foot limit from a single-family residential, we cannot stop them. I, I did talk to them at the beginning, saying, I'm not sure this is a great, a great location for this. It's not a horrible location for a five-story building. But it's maybe not a great one either, because, as Commissioner Kennedy pointed out, Lang Avenue is pretty close there. So, at any rate, I, I wanted to sort of give you a little bit of, of what our, our dilemmas are and why we didn't try to make them do a three-story building, because we don't really have, well, also, keep in mind, I think all of you understand that many times, we're criticized for not being business-friendly. So, you want us to, do you want us to tell people they can't build what the code allows them to build? So, then, you know, we're conflicted. Are we supposed to be business-friendly? Are we supposed to be allowing what the code allows? And then, we can't stop them anyway. If the code allows it, even if we say no, they can still come forward. So, I just want to...
I actually like to see, I mean, it's interesting conversations, because I actually like to see if we can have something regarding the shadowing. Some building, as the building goes higher, perhaps next to residential home or residential buildings, we can look into, like, if the shadow hits, maybe they should lower in that section, so the shadow doesn't hit the other side of the building.
Well, that's not...
You know, something like that in the code, so it doesn't inundate or affect the other building or impact them as much.
Okay, that's something, we can, we can think about that. Now, again, staff can't implement that, because if staff does it, it's just an idea. It's just staff's idea. And clearly, the planning commission or a city council doesn't have to follow staff's idea. So, and, and it's a good point, Commissioner Heung, but we've only been doing shadow analysis for, really since the general plan. And it's only been in a couple scenarios where you have three or taller-story buildings. Because when you have two-story buildings, it's really generally not a shadow cast.
Right, just for cases that are a lot taller building, like in this case.
So, we'll think about that, and it may be something that the Commission wants to, to think about, too, as we move forward into the brave new world that's coming before us.
And I have just one last thing, just for the benefit of all the Commissioners. Our decision on the small wireless, that was appealed, correct?
Oh, yes.
To the City Council?
Yes. And right now, we are planning it to be on the September 3 meeting. That's the, that's our...
For the City Council to consider the appeal?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And one comment about multi-story buildings and, and, like you said, shadowing sort of a new thing that's been starting to be looked at since the general plan update. But has there been any thought or comment about potential, the potential impacts or people's, you know, opinions about a multi-story building having an effect on, I don't know if you call it a view shed, or, or views? And, and, you know, depending, and it might be just a very site-specific thing from one place to the next of how, what, what might be a two, three, four-story building, and how that suddenly changes the visual perspective from where people have their homes or even their businesses. That's a, just thought I'd throw that out there as something we might consider when it comes to future multi-story buildings. There's, there's, there's a certain, I don't know, maybe there's, there's a certain aesthetic appeal to being able to look north and see the mountains, and to have a building that wasn't there before, where you can't see them anymore, or where it blocks a certain, a certain view. That's, that seems like that could be a worthwhile consideration.
Well, it is something to consider. In this case, you know, the views you're talking about were from the freeway, right? You were blocking the view of the freeway.
Yeah, in this case, I'm not, there's really not so much that issue because of where it is, you know.
But I would tell you this, that we have had that issue come up, more surprisingly, in, in new single-family developments. Because they're two-story up against a one-story, and we have had that complaint from the counter.
I'm familiar with that, but, you know, here's just, you know, this is just a slightly different,
Take on it.
Different take on it, yeah.
Anything else?
Well, I'm City Council Action Two. I, I do want to just, I think many of you, maybe all of you are aware that the, the, there's great changes coming to our Engineering and Building divisions. Last night, the Council approved a contract with somebody to take over the building aspects, building division aspects. I mean, the complete, so, and then also, next week, they're gonna be looking at selecting someone to do our engineering. Which means that barring, except, with the exception of one individual in those departments, that as of September 6, there, we will not have any city employees in those divisions. Now, that's gonna change a lot of things. So, I, I think you may notice some effect on certain things. You may not, I don't know, but it will change things. And any transition like that is not necessarily gonna be simple or easy. I, I don't know if it'll affect necessarily things that come to you, but you do get conditions of approval from Engineering and Building right now. And the people who are writing those are gonna be changing in the next, in the next month and, and on. So, just so that you're aware of that, there's a lot of changes happening right now in the...
From Engineering and Public Works, so it'll be contracted, and there'll be no city employee at, say, at the level of Director of Public Works?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, Greg, you're looking at the Director of Public Works. So, we, 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 we don't have a Public Works Department anymore. We, we sort of split it in half, and, and the Engineering Division came under Community Development, which is under my, me, and then...
So, and then, then there would be no city employee as a city engineer?
Correct.
Okay.
And we haven't had that actually for about a year, over a year now.
Yeah.
But we've had a consultant doing just that, but now, as the decision is made to, we're not gonna hire a, a city engineer, we're gonna contract with one.
But we still have city staff in that department.
Today, we do, on, on which, you're referring to Engineering? As of September 6, there'll be one staff member in Engineering who is planning on retiring in the next few months. So, at, probably by about the end of the year, there will be no city staff in Engineering or Building. They'll all be contracted.
All contracted out. Will they still have a presence in the building?
Yes, they'll still have a presence.
They'll be here.
You won't notice the difference when you walk into City Hall.
Right.
But if you went, and, and some of the employees are probably gonna be hired by those consulting firms. So, some of the faces may not change, at least not immediately. But, you know, it is, it is a change. I, I don't want to, I don't want to overstep it, because these people are also, they're, they're, they're experienced folks that, that are doing these things. It's not like they just, we just got somebody off the
Right.
7-Eleven with a Slurpee and, you know, hey, you want to do building? You know, they, they know what they're doing, but it's gonna, there's gonna be a bit of a transition, I think, as we go through the next month or so.
And last night, they did, they agreed, I, I wasn't able to be here last night, with Will Dan Engineering?
Will Dan, yeah. So, Will Dan Engineering is gonna be our building consultant.
Okay. And then there's another engineering component that's coming?
Another engineering firm is, is, is who we're looking at to do, in our Engineering Division.
Okay. Now, Will Dan, they do plan check and all that? Is that what I?
Anything building-related, they would be...
Okay, so they're gonna do all that?
Yeah.
So, that's gonna be completely out of, you know, well, city control, I mean...
Well, yes, not done by city employees.
Not by city employees, okay. And that, that has an impact on your day-to-day?
Yes, it will have an impact on our day-to-day.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the past, the city has submitted plans to other companies for...
In the past, in, in the, since, since November, we've been working with a consultant who did our building and plan checking. But we had staff who did inspection and building technician. Engineering, we had, we hired someone to do, to oversee that department when the former Public Works Director left. And he's still here doing city engineering duties about two days a week. So, yeah, we've kind of been transitioning that way since last June, or May or June. That's all. I just wanted to educate you, so you understand what's coming.
Appreciate that, really do. Anything else from staff or Commission? Nope. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.